Good morning, Board. For the record, Chuck Henry, Director of Sarasota County Health and Human Services, and Health Officer, Florida Department of Health in Sarasota. We'll move right to our update slides and certainly stop and question me at any time, but there'll be time at the end as well. Can you see the slides this morning?
No.
No.
We're good? Okay. So I'll start real quick with where we're at with our case counts. Cumulative, 26,622 cases to date, and we're just a few days away from one year into this. It was just a little over a year ago that we were informed about the first case at Doctors' Hospital here in Sarasota County. It was a Manatee resident, but here in Sarasota County. So, time flies, I guess, when things are moving rapidly. 1,230 hospitalizations, 725 deaths, 375 of those. So more than 50% of those are linked to our elder care facilities. So we're real excited about seeing vaccines move in through that group. Our 14-day percent positivity is now down to 3.57 and continues to trend downward. Our 14-day case rate per 100,000 is 236, and that also continues to trend downward. As of yesterday, we had 69 COVID-positive patients in our four acute care hospitals, 17 of those in the ICU. And for comparison, last summer, our peak was about 160 cases in the hospital, so we're way down from there. Moving on to the vaccine data, we've vaccinated almost, well, right at 74,400. That's total people vaccinated. I think the total vaccine number is well over 100,000, but that's people vaccinated. Those that have received their first dose only is just over 40,000, and those that have received both first and second doses is just under 34,000. Overall, 17% of our population has now been vaccinated. 81% of those vaccines have gone to our citizens aged 65 and older. And with that particular group, about 17% of those 65 and older in our community have now been vaccinated. Our account registration system with the county, we have 142,067 accounts as of yesterday. Remembering that accounts can register two people, so, and about 30 to 40% do that, so we're probably somewhere just shy of 200,000 people in that registry. And we're currently serving registration numbers up to 32,478 as of today. I've gotten some questions about variants. Some of those were passed through you all, but I just wanted to take a couple of minutes, two slides, to talk about variants. We haven't talked about that here at the Board. There's three variants that, and a variant is just a, when a virus mutates. And we expect viruses to mutate. That's what viruses do. And so as they mutate, they develop variant strains. And what's important is that science studies those strains and understands what that means for our community. There's three mutations that are here in the U.S. that they're watching. The UK mutation, which is B.1.1.7. The South African mutation, which is B.1.3.5.1. And then a Brazilian variant, which is P.1. When we look at the data for those variants in Florida, we have about 490 cases reported statewide of these variant strains. They've resulted in 14 hospitalizations and one death. And all of them are the UK variant, the B.1.1.7, except for one single Brazilian P.1 case that was identified and a traveler. It's important to note, as I said before, we expect viruses to mutate. And what's really important is for the scientific and medical community to answer what I call the "so what" question, because we expect them to mutate, so what does that mean? And the "so what" questions are, you know, is it going to spread faster under this mutation? Is it more, is it going to result in more severe illness or milder illness? Is it going to be resistant to treatment methods that we have out there now? Does the mutation create an ability for it to evade detection by any of our diagnostic tests? Or does it, the mutation give it the ability to evade antibodies, either natural or through vaccines, that have been developed in people? And so those are the key questions our scientists continue to watch, and the science is evolving on that. So far, it appears that, for the most part, vaccines are fairly good against these variants. The African variant is the one that they're concerned about some vaccines having some resistance to. The one most common in Florida, the UK variant, the early science suggests that it may result in more severe illness and may spread more rapidly. But I stress that's early science. And just as an example, when we begin to identify variants, we usually identify those in the sickest people that are in the hospitals to understand what's going on. And so one might expect you to see more data of more severe illness with those strains early on. And as we learn how to do better surveillance and detect them more readily, the data may turn around. We may discover that it's not really causing more severe illness. We're just seeing that right now, early on. So, long ways to go. I don't think it's anything for us to panic about right now. I do think it's important to be aware, and this last bullet on this slide is the most important for me and my segue into what I always say. And, you know, the best way to stop these new variants is to stop the spread of virus in our community. And we do that through social distancing, through wearing a mask when we can't social distance, through hand washing often and vigorously, increased sanitation, staying home when we're sick. All of those things we've done for the last year as a community really well. And the vaccines, of course, will help dramatically, no doubt about that. But we still encourage people to follow those basics that have kept us safe as a community, even after the vaccine, when you're out and about in the community. Because the real answer to stopping this virus, including the variants, is to stop the spread in our community. So that's my short presentation today. Happy to answer questions if you have them related to that. And then I have one related but different item at the end.
Okay. We're going to start with Commissioner Ziegler, then Commissioner Moran, then Commissioner Kutsinger. Commissioner Ziegler.
Yeah, Chuck, I appreciate that. I appreciate you going to the variants. I know I got an email from Claire on Longbow Key, and I think this is a good exercise in it, you know, it's difficult to find some positives with COVID, but one of the positives, people are much more informed and engaged with their local governments. And I know that, you know, this segment of the COVID updates are starting to really resonate in the community. People are appreciative of the updates that you're giving. They're appreciative of the information the county's sending out. So I think it's a good exercise, and hopefully that'll continue with other issues in our community. Now, a couple of questions. The vaccine pop-ups that are occurring all around the county now, whether it's municipalities or my understanding is there's going to be a heavy effort with the churches, specifically in the African-American community. What kind of relationship do we have with these pop-ups that are occurring or that are coming down the pipe? And I know there's been some that have been covered by the media recently, but I just want to understand from your standpoint and your operation, again, the county doesn't have direct oversight, but from your standpoint, from the Sarasota Health Department, with the pop-ups, I mean, like, the city of Sarasota, you know, we are providing the vaccine, correct? And then we are going through the county registration system. I mean, can you kind of go through where we're at now with those pop-ups and where we plan to go with them?
Sure. And first, let me say the term "pop-up" is just a label we place on a vaccine event that occurs over a weekend or a three-day period as opposed to a permanent site like we have at the mall. And so it can mean a lot of different things. You are starting to see more of those. We began seeing those a few weeks ago, and there essentially are two types. There's one that the state is freeing up extra vaccine above our allotment as a county and sending a state team in to conduct a pop-up operation. We saw that at Venice two weeks ago. I think it was two weeks ago. We also, as we get more and more vaccine in our allotment and it begins to exceed my ability to put it out at our mall location, we look for opportunities to get more vaccine out. The pop-up in Northport was really a collaborative between the city of Northport, the state incident management team, and our county, and that we provided the vaccine, but the state agreed to send their team in and staff that pop-up along with assistance from Northport. So I didn't have to send my staff down to do that, and we got 3,000 more doses out over the weekend. Smaller pop-ups that are neighborhood-focused or church-focused, you know, the ones that I, and I've only done one so far, the ones that I locally initiate are really focused on minority populations because of the public health concerns around their likelihood of more negative outcomes from this virus, and they're very small and controlled.
And that's what you did in Newtown recently?
We did one in Newtown last weekend, and there's another one being planned by the state, bringing in additional vaccine. Last week was my vaccine. The one this week is the state's vaccine, again, bringing in additional vaccine for our community, again, focused in our minority populations. And those are being coordinated through NAACP, through faith-based leaders, through Multicultural Health Institute, all of our key partners that work within that community. There are pop-ups for, under the Governor's initiative, for 55 and above communities. And again, let me be clear, that's not to vaccinate 55 and above. It's understanding that those communities have a high number of 65 and above in them. So around the state, they're sending groups into these communities to vaccinate those 65 and above within the communities. We have not had one of those yet. I think we're working on plans with the state to, excuse me, to potentially have one later this week. What we ask the state, because Sarasota, we're unique in a lot of ways, but one of the ways we're unique, again, as you're all aware, 37% of our population's over the age of 65. And so we have the third highest number, third highest percentage of seniors over the age of 65 per population. And we certainly are the largest county with that high number. The two above us are Charlotte with about 40% and Sumter County at 50%, both smaller counties. So we still have 100,000 people on our 65 and above list I need to get to. And so we asked the state, rather than focus on a neighborhood and create an uproar about jumping in line, could they pick a neutral site and work with us and bring extra doses into our community and pull right off our registry? And that's the direction we're moving, but we're still putting those plans together. They certainly are happy to do that for us.
And I appreciate that clarification. It's also an interesting experience having the cities come together with plans for these pop-ups. They kind of give you the plans. You have them on the shelf when you're ready. I'd like to see one in Longbow Key. Obviously, that's such an old area, but, you know, or more experienced people, I guess, is the better way to say it. But I think Longbow Key would be important, but I do appreciate that clarification now. Did you have something else?
Well, I was just going to comment. The plan that we're working on, it's been out in the media already for the city of Sarasota. As most are aware, they put that plan together and sent it up to the state, hoping to get additional vaccine. This week, in our allocation, we got 13,000 first doses, and it came right on the heels of the late arrival of last week's doses due to the weather. And so we said, here's an opportunity to help move all that vaccine out in a quick manner. I mean, I'd like nothing better than to get to the end of this week and tell the state, my 13,000 is gone, send me more.
But the city's using our system, though, correct?
So the city will use our registration system, and they're pulling that operation together primarily with volunteers. You know, from my perspective, probably on Thursday morning, we'll make a decision, is everything in place or not, or to move forward. But I, you know, every day, things fall further in place, so I'm pretty confident things are going to be in a good shape there. It's a great opportunity. And then, I talk to Longbow a lot. I understand they have a high percentage of residents over the age of 65. But, you know, my concern right now, when we do these pop-up events, the one in Northport, the one in Venice, the one that we're planning for Sarasota, have all pulled from our registry. And I'm just concerned about having a large event on the island and sending all of our city, I'll pull them from the registry and send them out to the island. But we do want to do an event on the island when we have the opportunity to be more focused.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair point. Two more real quick. Now, I know we still have a long way to go with the 65 and up, but do we have any indication on the next wave? I mean, I know the Governor has mentioned law enforcement, which I'm shocked they haven't been vaccinated yet, and also teachers, which, you know, my wife's been pushing at the school board level, and I think both of those make sense. But are we looking at maybe partnering with some of our law enforcement agencies and maybe the school district to get ready for that? And how is that going to play with, you know, we still have, again, we have 200,000 people in this queue, and we still have a long way to go. But obviously, we need to plan and get people registered and everything eventually before we reach the end, because we don't want any break. But how is that process playing out, or have we even looked that far yet?
So that's brand new. And as you all are aware, the Governor made an announcement at a press conference yesterday that he's looking to, and I went back and watched that conference again last night, he's looking to utilize the federal, the four federal sites that are coming into Florida, and the closest one to us would be Tampa, and that additional vaccine that's above the state's allotment to open up vaccines for our law enforcement and for teachers. I think he talked about perhaps starting with an age of over 50. So I haven't seen written guidance. I anticipate seeing that today in terms of how that plays out and whether we have any flexibility at the local level on that. We do have a plan in place, working with Sarasota County, with our team for law enforcement, when the green light is given and their prioritization. And, you know, I, early on, you know, the Governor's executive order specified, rather than using the language "first responders," they use frontline healthcare workers to try to break up the number of people, and that's why law enforcement was not in that. We all assumed they would be in the very next phase. Obviously, teachers are concerned around the country and here in Sarasota County, so we'll be continuing to work with them. We've already done a special pop-up for those teachers over age 65. In fact, we'll be doing the second dose for them this weekend.
Okay. Yeah, and I think it's so important that we stick to our registration system, whatever we can do. And even if we got to adjust that and as we add new people to it, that obviously, and I know you have personally been committed to, you know, when I talked to the Governor's office and there was discussions about the Venice, you were very clear on using our registration system, so I appreciate that. Lastly, there's some rumors that, you know, and there's some maybe experts out there that are pointing at April for maybe herd immunity. Do you have any, I mean, is that a little bit aggressive? Or, you know, at what point do you envision that we get back to normal, right? And, I mean, you know, people are wearing masks everywhere in the stores, and obviously we still have this virus out there. But at what level do we, I don't know if this will ever go away, but at what level do we feel comfortable where everything's kind of back to normal? And I think in Sarasota County, we've done a good job of not overreacting, but being safe and responsible, and our citizens are smart about it. But where do we reach that level? And then is there herd immunity coming down the pipeline or not?
So I think we will eventually reach a herd immunity with the vaccine. Most epidemiologists think that's in the 75 to 80% vaccinated range, so we have quite a ways to go there. Countywide, as you recall, we were at 17%, you know, as a community. And so, you know, it's our age 65 and above that are most likely to be hospitalized and have serious consequences, including death. But it's actually the younger group, the 18- to 40-year-olds, that are responsible for the most spread, because they're more active out in the community. So, you know, we're all excited to get through this phase of protecting the most vulnerable and then begin to really focus resources and vaccine on everybody else so that we can really tamper that spread down. Somewhere that, along there, the amount of, we hope, the amount of transmission across our community will drop below 2%, maybe all the way down to 1%. And that creates a much safer environment. You know, it's all about how much virus is circulating in the community in combination with getting as many people vaccinated.
Now, someone's, you know, we get emails all the time, all the commissioners up here, hey, I'm number 65,143. When am I getting the vaccine? You know, I'm tired of waiting. I mean, from your perspective, is it fair to say that, number one, the manufacturing of the vaccines obviously increasing, because it takes time to kind of snowball up and from the start of the manufacturing to where we're at now and where we'll go? And then, number two, with the change in formula or the focus on distributing vaccine to 65 and up populations? From your perspective, when you're seeing these vaccine orders come in or the supply come in, do you feel like we're ramping up in supply to give people some comfort that we're going to get to their number soon?
We certainly have tremendously ramped up in the last two weeks, and, you know, and that's certainly part of the Governor's plan. They began looking at the data, and while he calls it, I think Sarasota, Manatee, Charlotte, we're behind. He was referring to the percent of 65 and above vaccinated. If you looked at total vaccinations, we were in the top 10 across the state, but we have so many seniors that were behind in the percent vaccinated. They recognized that. They began sending more vaccines. In fact, they called me last week and asked what my capacity at the mall was, which is about 2,000 a day, so 14,000 a week, but I have to include second doses in that that are now due every week. And they said, well, how much do you want to send? I said, send what you can. We'll figure out how to get it out. So, so that's what we're doing with these pop-ups. We're just figuring out ways to get it out.
Thank you. All great questions, Commissioner. Commissioner Moran, then Commissioner Kutsinger, then Commissioner Dieter, and then I'll go last.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chuck, I can't thank you enough. Appreciate everything you do in our community, and especially with the state and county relationship on that, which is unique. You're a state employee, which leads into my first question. So, at our last meeting, Rich Collins, who deals with our emergency management operations for us and does a fantastic job, we got into some conversations related to that county-state relationship with emergency management planning and our continuation of operations planning. And with, it's my understanding, there's new leadership at the FDE at the state. If that's the case, I'm hoping some of that communication might have trickled down to you. Have you got any feedback of why the state didn't have an enrollment registry? And the bigger question for me is, it took a year, knowing that they didn't, then trying to recover, it took a year to bring it about, which at that point, all the communities, including ours, just went on to different enrollment registries. So have you got any communication from the state of what actually took place there?
I do not have specific communication in terms of why. You know, I hear the same things that I think I've articulated to you as a Board, that as this virus evolves, and the timing of when the vaccines come into play and which groups are going to be vaccinated first all play a major role in the need for a registration system versus not a need. You know, if vaccines were more readily available or we were doing a smaller group, we may not need a registry. But the direction we've gone as a state to make sure we vaccinate all the vulnerable population and the sheer number of those really dictated the need for a registry that maybe wasn't realized before.
And again, I can't thank you enough, Chuck. Your ability to pivot on that and deal with our human capital, with our employees, and just a coordinated effort from you, I just, again, can't thank you enough. My second question is related to the feds. So Jonathan Lewis, our county administrator and staff have, it was my first taste of seeing a federal influence in this at a local level with our transportation of a mandate related to the masks. And along the lines of what Commissioner Ziegler was bringing up is, are you getting any communication of what success by definition is in this? Is it when there is herd immunity? And what's the definition of that? I just heard you mention, I know you were probably just talking in generalizations, is does herd immunity have a definition? Is it 75% of the population vaccinated? What if you don't get 75% of the people vaccinated, just simply because they would refuse to take it? Is it a definition of, is COVID gone? Is it gone in the world? Is it gone in the United States? Is it regionally gone? When is there going to be some type of measurable, where you ring the bell of success? And normally, that was a local conversation until just recently, the feds coming in and having some mandated behaviors here in our hometown. Can you speak to that? Do you have communication with the feds? Is there any discussion of what success is in this?
So my communications on those topics would be with our state health office and with CDC at the federal level. And that's really where we take our cues from in terms of policy and guidance. On the federal side, it's mostly us reading their material and asking questions, and then working with our state office on what is the policies around those things as they come down through Florida, because as you know, they don't always completely align. I think there's a number of measures that we'll be watching locally and that they'll also watch at the state and the national level, and some of those we've talked about already. You know, what is our infection rate across our community? What is our percent positivity? So looking at how much virus is circulating and trying to make a decision and understand when is it low enough that we can call it normal? The virus may never go away, just like influenza. It may be out there all the time. And so, when do we have enough vaccine available and enough people vaccinated that that just becomes part of our community fabric and we work with it? I don't have the answers to that. I think scientists are looking at that. The one big concern that I've heard consistently from some of the top scientists is understanding more about the variants and what impact the variants may have on spread. For example, if a variant strain is resistant to antibodies that were produced naturally from people that had been infected and/or from vaccines, then we could see a huge surge of COVID with that new variant if we're not careful. And so I think they're going to be slow to ease up and get to a point where they say they're comfortable. That'll involve calculations of how many people have been ill and may have some natural immunities, how many people have been vaccinated, and when do we feel like those two combined create what might be considered herd immunity?
Well, and I appreciate that, Chuck. And I guess my ask of you is, you know, with your experience and your resume, it's just beyond reproach, is that when you go to some of these folks and you're dealing with some of them, I just think it's an intellectually honest conversation, especially coming from you and your resume is defining, start to define some of these things, is people are literally, their businesses are being shut down. I mean, people are suffering to have meaningful income coming into their household. My instincts tell me is that there is going to be a heavy pressure for people to start defining these things, is if the answer is there's not going to be any more government mandates, when herd immunity comes about, well, let's define it. What exactly does that mean? And I get it, those are very difficult, tough conversations, but I think they need to be had. And any help you can do and influence you have in that, at least bringing the information about, would be welcome from me. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kutsinger.
Chuck, speaking of the Emergency Operations Center, I was able to do a tour of the center on Friday and meet a number of the people who are working behind the scenes on this. And I just want to be very clear that we profoundly appreciate all the effort that's been put forth. There's a number of those folks who are working seven days a week, and some of them, I think, a couple of them I met had worked for 30 days straight. And they're just doing an outstanding job, and I really want them to hear from this commission how much we appreciate the effort that they're making, and they are making a difference. That day, they were trying to get 3,000 appointments set for the pop-up event in Northport. That's not an easy process. And so I just think we need to be aware of the work that's going on and what a great job they're doing. And if you would, certainly, as you have opportunity, let them know how much we appreciate the work that they're doing. Along those lines, would you speak to the list when someone, right now, we've got an expanding opportunity through Publix and Walmart and some other events where people who are on our list then get a vaccine somewhere outside of our list? Would you speak to that and what needs to happen there?
Sure. And I think we'll see more and more outlets for vaccines across the community that aren't connected to our registration system, which is a wonderful thing, because we want people to be vaccinated. But at the same time, it's very challenging for this super-hard-working staff at the EOC that's helping with our own appointment system, to manage an appointment system when, if people don't take themselves out if they've already received the vaccine. So we've done a couple of videos, and we've tried to message pretty heavily that if you receive your vaccine through somewhere other than the county and you're on our registry, we want you to come back into our system, log into your account, and delete your account. It's a pretty simple thing to do. There's an instructional video out there telling you how to do it. Our call center can help you do that if you need assistance with that. That makes a tremendous difference for us. And as an example, this 3,000 vaccine Northport event, I think we sent out over 5,000 appointments to get 2,000 slots filled, because we send out the appointments by order on the list, and we get back a large number of not available or decline. And we believe that the majority of those are because they've already received it. And so we're asking them to go and remove themselves from the list, because it helps us clean that up. We're also doing some, not me, it's the EOC staff, are doing some proactive things with that registry to go out and ask, are you still, have you received your vaccine already? And if not, are you still interested in it? Is a way to help us clean up that list so we don't have that delta there, and it'll be more efficient.
Perfect.
These outlets also help us, and you'll see the numbers move more quickly, so it's not necessarily tied to, I got 13,000 doses this week, and so we'll only move 13,000, or 6,000 if they all have two, or whatever. We'll move more rapid than that, because people are getting vaccines everywhere.
Perfect.
So if you're on the list, you've got your vaccine, be sure and go out and delete your account, because that'll be very helpful moving that forward.
That's correct. Now, if you got your vaccine from us at one Now, if you've got your vaccine from us at one of our events, then, uh, we'll automatically flip your record over and track you and, and send it, and send out a, uh, appointment for a second dose when it's due. Uh, so you don't need to do anything if you receive your vaccine from us, but if you received it from Publix, when Dixie's, Walmart, another county, uh, then we're asking you to go in and actively delete that.
It was good to hear that we're getting 13,000 doses. I saw J and J's, uh, vaccine got approved this morning, I believe. Is that right?
I haven't seen that yet, but I've been busy with other things. I knew it was, uh, before the panel today.
I believe that got approval and, um, some other, uh, vaccines are coming on the market. Do you anticipate, Chuck, being able to do these events, like if you were doing one in Northport and then being able instead of having folks that are maybe in Sarasota to be just begun on the list coming down, maybe taking a specific area and being able to do those events where you can pull from the area where you're doing the event? Do you anticipate that with more doses coming down the road?
So our, uh, registration system has that ability, but that would be in conversation with Mr. Lewis and you all, uh, on when the timing is right for that. I think at some point there'll be enough vaccine everywhere that, that, uh, the concern about where exactly I'm in line is, is not as strong and maybe that's the right time. Uh, but right now we have over 100,000 people, you know, probably more than that on the list, over 65 that are waiting to get their vaccines, which, which concerns me as we begin to expand who can get vaccines as well. So the list is the best way I know to try to be fair to everyone on that list and work our way through it as rapidly as possible.
Thank you.
Chair, could I add something to that?
And just so that, that we're clear on that topic, I've given direction to the county staff. We will not use the system, uh, other than how it's designed now, which is taking people in the order they came in. And we're not going in that direction without specific direction for me to them. And we won't be doing that until the, the vaccination is so prolific that Chuck is like, please help me get this vaccine out. I haven't found a creative way. We have so much coming in that I just, I, I have to have it. But short of that, I think for the integrity of the system and what we told our residents about first come, first served through our system, I think it's very important we stick with that, uh, message.
Okay. Now, I, I might add that related to that, as more vaccine becomes available, either through direct order for providers to, that have signed up to order it directly from the state, or if I have an abundance, I can transfer vaccine to certain providers that have completed all the paperwork. So, uh, we may have the opportunity to transfer vaccine to large medical providers around the county that can give a local presence, uh, as well, uh, across the community. And that's probably a better way to do it than to change our registry system.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dieter, then I have a couple of comments.
Um, I just have a couple of quick, quick questions. We've gotten a lot of complaints, a lot of suggestions, recommendations as to how we can do it better. But once people get to the process where they're getting the shots, we get nothing but pretty much 100% compliments on that part of the process. So the frustration is waiting for the shot and, and frankly, reading the paper doesn't help. It alarms a lot of people. They're finally doing one thing well on the front page today. It listed what number you're at and that answers a question for people. So if you stick to the facts, generally they'll help you out. My question is, when did we receive the first vaccine?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Yes, December 28th was the, the first, uh, vaccine we received and that was, uh, 3,500 doses.
September?
December 28th.
Yeah, I thought so.
The week, week.
So we're only on like around the second month.
Has it only been that long?
I, I know. It seems like people have been waiting two years for their inoculation, but it's really been two months. And we're, we've already accomplished that through the first dose with 40,000 people, I believe. So I think we need to keep that in mind, that this has not been a long dragged out process. The process we set up with, I'm very happy with. It's fair. Uh, the other misperception is that if you have a pop-up in Venice, it's going to serve like downtown Venice, but it's not. It doesn't make any difference where that pop-up is. You're, we're sticking with the line, correct?
That's correct. We pulled, uh, the names for the Venice one and the Northport one right out of our registry from, and some were from outer county that are in our registry, uh, you know, and, uh...
So there's really no big deal about where the pop-up is.
We did get some concerns from citizens that had to drive from North Sarasota down, but my, my comment back was citizens from Northport and Inglewood and Venice have been driving up here. It's the same system. We're just trying to move it around geographically where we have opportunities.
Yeah, and you demonstrated that in your con- um, conversation earlier about Longboat. You know, it's nice to say Longboat got a pop-up, but it doesn't necessarily serve Longboat. You might have to drive from Northport to Longboat, so it wasn't that big a deal. So that, that's my main question. When did we first get the vaccines? And we have not, I, I think our process is fair, honest, transparent. And once people go through the process, they do nothing but rave about how fast and easy and polite it was. Um, our only problem is we're not getting enough doses. So since the governor recognized that Sarasota County has a larger population of people over the age of 65, have, have our doses significantly increased in the last couple of weeks?
Absolutely. And I mentioned 3,500 back in December is our first. The following week we got 1,400, uh, the next week we got 3,300, then we got 1,000. Then we had two weeks, I think of 3,000. Uh, then we had what we thought was a, a huge week where we got 7,000. Uh, last week was 8,000, although it was a little delayed by weather and this week 13,000. So we are seeing a significant increase.
So we're headed in the right direction. Okay.
And those are all first doses.
I'm still waiting for my first dose and...
Along with the 13,000 first doses this week, I have almost 4,000 second doses as well that arrived to do. So we're really doing almost 18,000 doses this week locally.
Well, keep up the good work. Thanks.
All right. Chuck, just a few comments. Uh, number one, if December 28th is the day we got our first dose, we're only been at, we've only been at this post-receiving the first dose for 58 days. So it's absolutely amazing what you have done. And people are stressed out, people are frightened, but I see a different tone in the emails now, dramatically different tone. Uh, that said, uh, people who do, and you, you need to say this, do it as a favor to this commission, every time you're in front of us, at least twice after you get your shot from somewhere else, take yourself off the list. I, I know people who, when I say that to them, yeah, I gotta do that. And these are decent, wonderful people, not lazy, but we've got to just keep pressing that issue. Uh, the second thing is that to me, the integrity of the system is, of our list is extremely important. It's probably upsetting to some people that live in North County and have to drive to Northport, vice versa. But I'll, I'll go on record, I'll be the meanie. That's the deal. My wife and I are in the high 50,000s. We're patiently waiting and wherever you send us, we will drive. I, I know the drive may be a little harder on some people, but we do not need a spectacle of people being added to a list or the integrity of the list being changed. So I, I, I would, uh, I would add that. I'll always vote for maintaining the, unless, like you say, we have so much vaccine, we, we don't know where, where to, how to quickly get rid of it. The other thing, and then I'm done, um, is the average person out there, and there's thousands, there's tens and tens and tens of thousands of people listening to you right now, please do not listen to Commissioner Dieter. She has a far lower, lower number. There's 40, 50,000 people listening to you. Our staff and their employment agreements with the county agree to go into the EOC when we have big events occur. Most people don't realize that and they don't really stop doing their other job. I'm looking at some people out there who I know have spent 30, 45, 60 days at the EOC, yet they're still answering my emails. That's a big deal and the people really don't realize it. I can't imagine walking into work and having to find 3,000 people so that we can get them vaccinated by the end of the week. These are really Herculean tasks and I would just ask all our citizens to be patient and our staff is really doing a wonderful job. So please stress once or twice that take yourself off the list. I see Don out there. He can help us get that word out because I, I've heard stories where people are on 18, 19 lists and I absolutely just gag at that thought if they're not removing themselves. So, uh, go ahead, Commissioner Ziegler.
Yeah, uh, you know, we like to joke how many people actually watch this, but if you look at some of the videos, you know, they've gotten 73,000 views, they've gotten, you know, 18,000 views. So, uh, uh, people are really interested in this information. I just want to give Don, you know, and his communication staff and working with the state, this is where this is so important and it was discussed before about this relationship, this unique relationship we have with you as our state health director, but also with the county. And you can work seamlessly with county staff. If we didn't have that relationship, you would just be in a building somewhere else that we kind of know that guy. And, uh, I think that relationship is so key that you guys have this amazing working relationship and that has allowed us, and it wasn't designed like this with a pandemic in mind, but now that we had, when COVID hit, it allowed us to seamlessly integrate and we've seen that with the registration system. We see that every day with the communications part and I can't stress how important the communications part of this is. And I appreciate our staff working hand in hand with you guys. That's so important. I also do appreciate your staff, as was discussed, 24/7 for seven days a week for a year now. I mean, we were just talking about it. I think the first case in a couple of days, we're going to have our year anniversary. Not something you really want to celebrate, but we will celebrate the response and the work, the hard work put in by your staff. Now, let me ask one more question, uh, that I failed to ask before. Homebound people that can't drive or, you know, can't take a bus or, you know, obviously we're trying to hit the older population, what are we doing to support them? Because they might be down in Venice, can't get to the mall. They might even be in Venice and can't get to the Venice Community Center. How are we handling people like that?
So that's, that's a great question. It's one of two problems we're still working to resolve that are really important. So for, for homebound, uh, if, if you look at this morning's paper, uh, the city of Venice is actually working a pilot for the state. Uh, it's a state-run operation. Uh, simultaneously, we've been working with the agencies in our community that provide direct services to homebound to try to get a sense of how many individuals there are and actually have begun distributing a, a flyer with, that goes out with services, uh, where so people can indicate if they're interested in getting, receiving a vaccine. Uh, and we're working on processes, uh, both with the county as a possibility and as well as some of our home healthcare agencies to address that homebound need. Uh, I think we're very close. I just don't have, uh, a system that, that I can say this is exactly what we do, but I think that's coming very soon.
And I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but I'd be very interested if there's any resources or any help that we can provide to support that. Um, I'm all on board, so.
Fabulous. The, the other big issue we're working on, just so the public knows we're working on it, is, uh, for those individuals under 65 whose doctors have said they really need the vaccine, uh, right now in the state system, the state says there should be referred to the hospitals and the hospitals have the ability to make that determination. You know, the challenges are the hospitals all don't have the vaccines to do that. Uh, and so we're working with our hospitals to try to figure out what does that look like and how can we put a consistent system up? Uh, some of our hospital systems have begun trying to vaccinate patients within their system, which is wonderful, but we need to expand it out to the whole community.
Perfect. Thank you. Chuck, thank you as always. It is going to be a great day when we no longer ask you to come every meeting and we look forward to that. And the first time you're not at our meeting, I'm going to say something, uh, mean about you. So, but it is going to, we're going to be so happy that day and thank you so much for all you're doing for us.